Good evening, welcome to the 19th meeting of fiscal year 2017 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Brian Furze, the Chair. I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, starting to my right.
I'm Alex Whiteside, a member.
I'm Michael Kelly, a member.
I'm Julia Gatlin, a clerk.
I'm Tim Zerwinski, Assistant Town Planner and Eagle Scout from Troop 25 in Bayonne, New Jersey.
April May Memorial Member.
Is it once an Eagle Scout, always an Eagle Scout?
Like the Marines.
Yes.
As the Marines.
Probably has an Eagle Scout tattoo somewhere.
Don't show us.
Moving along, we have a very busy agenda. We have a couple of administrative items. We have our next meeting dates of April 13th and April 27th. I don't, do we have any meeting minutes?
Yes, so two.
I'm sorry, yeah, there they are.
Two minutes that Julia shut out, that I've reviewed, and I move that we approve them.
All right, so those will be minutes of March 9th and...
That's 23rd.
March 23rd.
February 23rd.
February 23rd, excuse me. Right, tonight's March 23rd. February 23rd, I have a motion on the table to approve those.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Two more items. First of all, I'd like to just acknowledge some great news, which is that our Assistant Town Planner, Tim Zerwinski, has accepted a position at the Boston, former Boston Redevelopment Authority, now the Boston Development and Planning Agency. And Tim's great news is our sad news. Great opportunity for Tim, we're very proud of him, but it will be a tremendous loss for Milton, and we wish you all the best, Tim. And I believe this is Tim's last meeting, so thank you for everything you've done with us.
I really appreciate that, Brian, and it's been, it's been an honor and a joy to serve and work for you all. You've done great work. There's more great work to be done, and I know that Milton is in, is in great hands with all of you. You know, you've taught me a lot, and it's been a great, it's been a great experience working with the town in Milton. And also, for all the people working or watching at home, it's, it's been great working, you know, for the people of Milton. I think this is, it's a great town, people care a great deal, and it's, it's bittersweet. It's a great opportunity for me, but, you know, it's been, it's been really great. So I really appreciate everything you guys have done for me and helping me out in my career, so good luck.
Great, and likewise, you've helped us with process, and we really appreciate your contribution, and we really do wish you the best. It's a great opportunity for you, as you look through your...
Have we planned to, when we want something done in Boston, plan to call you up?
Yes, you will be on my speed dial.
I'm ethically bound to not do you any favors. I'm sorry.
We'll talk about that. And lastly, we have, we have a couple of guests tonight that I'm going to ask to come forward quickly and just introduce themselves and tell us why they're here. You can sit right here at the front of the table and speak into one of the microphones.
For all of them.
For all of the microphones.
So, my name's Ryan Fitzmaurice, I'm from Troop 5, Milton, and today I'm working on my citizenship in the community of Merrickage, where I have to attend a town meeting and learn about one of the things that's going on in Milton. So, I mean, I'm good, I'm very happy to see kind of behind the scenes of how Milton works.
Excellent.
And my name's Camden Lovell, I'm also in Troop 5, working on my citizenship at Merrickage, so I'm here to do the same.
And you're going to go to the town meeting as well as this meeting of the planning board?
Maybe, why not?
Well, as part of your, part of your deal, I think.
I wish more town meeting members would say that.
Well, if you have any questions, you let us know, and we'll, we'll do our best to answer them, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start with citizen speak. Our agenda tonight includes a discussion of modifying the 37 Central Avenue Site Plan Approval under new business. We also have two public hearings at 7:05, I guess it's one public hearing on two items, zoning articles for the May 2017 Annual Town Meeting, one is the Great Estate Plan Unit Development, one is the Parkway Plan Unit Development. On those two items, both of those are being reintroduced due to just basically a legal requirement. Both of those articles have been voted on. We will take new public testimony if there is any, but just want to make clear that any previous, any previous testimony on either one of those will be incorporated into tonight's meeting at the start. So we'll be only entertaining new testimony this evening.
And Brian, I'll just note that the, the articles being considered are, that language is the language that was approved by the planning board on February 23rd.
Great, thank you.
And by the warrant committee.
And by the warrant committee.
Yes.
And it's the language that will appear in the warrant?
Yes.
Right. So what we will be doing is voting to, we will be revoting our support or lack thereof, otherwise expect we'll vote our support on those two items for the warrant. It will appear in the warrant, that's the vote of the plan, of the warrant committee. And then we have some old business we're going to be talking about, Pulte Homes. If you're here tonight to speak to anything that I have not just mentioned, please feel free to come forward now. Okay, with that, we're going to move right into our 7:05 public hearing for the zoning articles for May 27, May 2017 Annual Town Meeting. We're going to start with the Great Estate Plan Unit Development, otherwise known as the Carberry Estate. And as just previously mentioned, this is with regard to, this is the same article that was voted on the February 23 hearing by the planning board, and then subsequently voted into the warrant by the warrant committee, I believe, on March 6th or 7th. And any previous testimony on this topic will be incorporated into tonight's hearing, and the board has been present for all of those hearings, if they're at the table tonight. So is there anyone that wishes, is there anything that we needed to cover other than what I just said before we go to the public?
I don't think so.
All right, I'm going to go to the public then. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this? Mr. Smith, please come forward.
Thank you.
I have a handout I'd like to pass around.
Yes, please.
Pass those down.
Julie, did you take one for the record?
I think there, I see there's six, so you can grab one.
Yeah, well, hand it over.
Thank you.
All set, okay. Right. Well, good evening, Chairman Furze, members of the planning board, Mr. Zerwinski, thank you again for our opportunity to speak this evening. I understand this is a procedural hearing, so I'm going to try to be brief, but you may have questions, so I'll stay as long as you want me to. As the planning board knows, a majority of the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association favors a 44-townhouse, unit-townhouse development over a 58-unit one. The developers' 40 B threats and intimidations have convinced some neighbors to support its plan. However, except for Mr. Chercalo, representing Mr. Weeks, I do not believe that any other member of the neighborhood has appeared before this board or any other board in support of, of the development's proposal. Northland Corporation is petitioning the town to significantly change current zoning based on only a conceptual plan. Furthermore, it has provided no evidence...
God bless you. Thank you.
...that they must have 58 units to be profitable. To help fill this void, I have prepared pro forma financial analysis for both a 44-unit development and a 58-unit development. These analyses employ a third-party modeling tool by Real Estate Financial Modeling, LLC, Boston Area Construction Costs published by BuildingJournal.com, and pricing information from Northland's presentations and their woodmere development. The pro forma analyses show that the smaller development yields a 1.51 multiple on invested equity. In other words, that represents a 51% return in three years, or 17% a year roughly. The larger development has a 1.62 multiple on equity. Contrary to its claim, a 44-unit development is not a sacrifice, is not the sacrifice that Northland suggests it is. Threats and intimidations are not a nice way to do business. The planning board should resist Northland's attempt to extract aggressive concessions from the town when more moderate compromises are reasonably achievable. On behalf of the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association, I request that the planning board reverse its approval of the Great Estate Plan Unit Development zoning amendment and allow for a full discussion of the article at the May town meeting. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you again.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to address one point, and you may have just said it, I was looking at the numbers. On your total land cost, can you explain the delta to us?
Yes. Obviously, I don't have knowledge of what the final land cost will be. So I've based the land cost on what is public information today. Northland has purchased 19.2 acres for 4.75 million, slightly under $250,000 per acre.
Mm-hmm.
I use that for the 44-unit development, assuming that that was the low end of their range. Mr. Dolly has told me that the more units that get approved in town meeting, the higher the price that he pays for the land, and the more profit he makes, so that Mr. Carberry's and Mr. Dolly's interests are aligned. So in order to reflect that, I increased the cost of the land, the assumed cost of the land, by $38,000 for the 58-unit development.
$38,000 per unit?
Per acre.
Per acre.
Per acre.
And that number comes from $38,000. You understand that to be the actual price?
No.
Okay.
Of course I don't.
Okay, that's what I was just asking, okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Just trying to, I'm just trying to understand it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have, I have one question too. It has to do with construction costs. You say that the construction cost per square foot for the 44 units is 287, and for the 58 units it's 286. And as I understand it, this includes all the infrastructure, all the roads, is built into that.
That's correct.
And it does seem to me that most of the infrastructure is going to be the same, whether it's 44 units or 58 units, and therefore, the idea that somehow the per-square-foot cost will be the same for both, I, I question whether or not that, that's the case.
Well, let me just answer, answer you with two points. First, the 44-unit development assumes the elimination of the Spur Row, Spur Road, and the current amendment by law does not specify whether this is sewage or, or septic. If it's septic, which it may well be, I would contend that the cost is very similar, whether, you know, on a per-unit basis. That, you know, the more units you have, the larger the septic fields have to be. It's as simple as that. So I would say that most of the major costs are definitely proportionally proportional to, to the number of units spelt, except for land, and that's not, of course. And that's been subtly accounted for. The, if you look at the page two, which has a summary of the, of the two proposals, the total construction cost assumed on the 44 units is, is 31.6 million, and on the 58, it's 41.5. So there's still a significant delta for those additional 14 units.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you for taking the time to prepare this, and it'll be incorporated into the record, as I mentioned at the beginning when, when we spoke, so thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the Carberry, oh, excuse me, the Great Estates, Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll be brief. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of Northland Residential, which is the owner of a portion of the property and has a balance of the property under agreement. We are happy with the outcome of the board's deliberation previously. We recommended the board, recommend approval of the bylaw as it was adopted, or as it was, as it was previously recommended by this board, and I guess slightly modified by the, at least from a technical perspective, by the warrant committee. And that any modification would be, I think would be inappropriate at this time, but certainly, you know, over the course of a period of time, there's been a significant amount of adjustment to the plan, to the development, to the number of units. There's a 20% reduction in the number of units from what was originally proposed. I feel like a broken record. I just reiterate that an adjustment down from 58 units on site, you may as well recommend that town meeting not approve the bylaw.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have just one thing. I do think that if you go through the, this, and give us some comments, that would be useful.
I've never seen it, and I'm not sure what I'd be looking at.
Well, I'll give you my copy.
And it doesn't, the first thing I would say, it doesn't take into account any actual numbers, any costs associated with...
It just seems to me that this is something that may get presented to town meeting, and I, you know, better now than later.
We'll certainly evaluate it and be ready to address it if we think it's reasonable to address when we get to town meeting.
Well, I think that you, if you like, you could have...
I have no capacity to adjust it, address it now. My client's not here, his people aren't here, I don't know what the...
Oh, no, I'm not saying tonight, but town meeting is a ways away, and so you could feel free to share if you wanted to. But you don't have to.
Thank you.
But I know you like to share, Mr. Corcoran, so...
Welcome to a tense citizen speak. Anytime, just wear your forested uniform, we'll recognize you on the floor.
You should have reserved seats for him.
I think he has a reserved seat by now. Thank you. Just one, you know, reference to something Mr. Smith said, I think, for anyone that's not familiar with the process, I think the, there will almost assuredly be an open discussion about both of these articles at town meeting that will be fairly inclusive and extensive, I would expect. So certainly, regardless of how we vote tonight, this is going to appear on the warrant, and we would, we would look for, we would expect that you would, that anyone with concerns would tell your town meeting members, so that they can bring those forward, and you can also speak to the moderator if you wish to speak, if you're not a town meeting member. One more time, Mr. Smith.
I appreciate your forbearance. The only point I would make to the, to the board is that it's very difficult for a town meeting members to have a full discussion when two boards of the town come with a recommendation for approval. And I think there's sufficient evidence here that the developer is overreaching in terms of the type of profit that he's trying to achieve, and if this board does not change its, its, you know, its approval, or withdraw, I know, a judgment, then you are putting, you know, the neighborhood at a very, at a big disadvantage in terms of having people listen to us, because you are supposed to be the experts.
Yeah, I mean, my only counter to that is, we've had zoning discussions within the past couple of town meetings that have had support from both the warrant committee and the planning board, and in almost all cases, in general bylaws anyway, those have been sent back to the planning board for further study. And the next one we let it consider, which is the Ice House, had support from both the warrant committee and the planning board, I believe, and was sent back for further study. So I do think town meeting does its job and does it quite thoroughly, so...
I'd rather, rather see it come from, from this committee.
Understood. Thank you.
I move that we, well, let's try if there's anyone else.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? Okay, thank you.
And we close the hearing?
Well...
You want to speak to it?
I was going to say, it's, it is one hearing.
Okay, move the portion of the hearing on, on the, on the Carberry Estate, so we can...
Move on.
So we can decide what to do with it.
All right, fair enough. So we'll move that, we'll, there's a motion to close the public hearing for this portion of the discussion, and we'll move to deliberate after the next public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we're going to talk about, we're going to deliberate on that subsequent to our second public discussion, which is on the Parkway Plan Unit Development, otherwise known as Blue Hill Ice or Ice House Development. Any comments before I go to the public?
Can you read the...
I'm going to bring the question, I'm going to bring the letter up.
Okay.
Nope, okay. So we have, we do have a letter that I'm going to start with. It's, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but the letter asks two specific questions that we will answer to the best of our ability. This is from Joe Sloan, 55 Concord Avenue, Milton, Mass. And he would like to know, number one, he says, Chairman Furze told the warrant committee that one additional site in Milton has been identified as possibly qualifying for the application of the Parkway PUD zoning as written, and the site might qualify though assemblage, through assemblage or some other means. Can you please identify the second potential site and describe what is meant by assemblage as it relates to that site, and whether the board would support incorporating residentially zoned properties into the development of an adjacent non-conforming business property? Okay, so with regard to what an assemblage is, an assemblage would obviously be combining one or more lots into a single lot through the town process of an A and R or a lot combination. In the, in the case of this specific bylaw, in order for a site to be considered, it would need to meet all of the criteria within the zoning, which includes having 200 feet of frontage on a Parkway, and a, most importantly, a pre-existing non-conforming business use. So you could not take, for instance, two or three residential homes that do not have a business in them today, and apply this zoning bylaw to them. There would have to be an existing, operating, non-conforming business on site. The sites that were referenced as potentially qualifying for the application of a Parkway PUD zoning, the, there are two that this board can think of in discussions prior to this meeting. One would be the Milton Marketplace, which if incorporated into an assemblage, could potentially have 200 feet of frontage on the Parkway. It would be quite a feat.
Milton Food Mart?
Food Mart, excuse me, Milton Food Mart, just to be, thank you for the correction. So that would be quite an assemblage, I think it would involve three or more properties, but it is a possibility that someone could theoretically assemble that site and then have a non-conforming business use that could technically apply.
I suppose it's five properties, I think.
Five properties, okay. The other one that could apply is the building that's on the corner of Blue Hill Parkway and Blue Hill Avenue, which is currently used as either a yoga studio or functional therapy.
Milton Orthopedic Rehabilitation.
Okay, so that is the other potential site.
From the school.
Right, okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, that's a different, okay. So this is right across from Tucker School. There's an existing non-conforming use. That site in its current constitution would not qualify, but if you assembled it with several, two, multiple parcels, you would potentially have the ability to apply this bylaw. Our expectation would be that if someone came forward for either of those properties, it would be very likely that this would be a new public process for a new PUD zoning, because this would likely, with all of the other restraints and constrictions that are put in this zoning, not work. But those are the two properties that were referenced. As far as whether the board would support incorporating residentially zoned properties into the development of an adjacent non-conforming business property, I would not comment as to what our opinion would be on a, or even my opinion would be on, on a specific, there's no specific application, so I'd...
But presumably, if they did this, if they assembled residential with a business, property, five or six properties, which is highly unlikely, as you pointed out, this would be permissible.
Yes.
Under the zoning.
Per the bylaw that we...
Per this bylaw, yeah.
Also, you'd have to build another market.
And you would have to put in another food market. So again, you would be able to qualify to apply this zoning to the site.
Why would you have to build another?
Because the zoning requires a marketplace. So you would have to have a market, you would have to have the ability to be, meet all the setbacks, meet all the parking requirements, meet all the green space requirements. You'd have to be next to conservation land, I believe, wouldn't you?
I think it's just unfortunate that we even allow the assembly.
Well, that's state law, I think, isn't it?
The question is, what are you doing spot zoning then? And some people say that spot zoning doesn't apply if it's a PUD, but I think it's better safe than sorry.
Well, I'm just thinking a non-conforming use is grandfathered in, or a non-conforming use in my mind for the lot that existed.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's, that's an interesting point. I don't know for sure, we'd have to test the laws to whether, if you then combined with a small lot, if that...
This lot is non-conforming.
This lot is very good point, Mike. You might not be able to do that under an A and R.
And you know, at the, I think it's 191 Blue Hills Parkway, the Milton Orthopedic, those are all residential lots.
Yeah.
So would this planning board grant an A and R to turn six residential lots, houses on them?
That didn't have a non-conforming use.
That's a, that's a very good point, Mike. I hadn't thought of that. So that's, you probably, you might lose your non-conforming...
If you made the lot bigger, you wouldn't necessarily be able to expand the business outside the footprint.
Right.
But it doesn't mean that you can't, couldn't expand the lot.
Right.
It would simply be a use question.
Right.
Yeah, in other words...
So this may not apply.
But this... You could use it as, as a business with a similar footprint, a similar size, and good to you that you have another acre beside you now, which would be a good business.
Well, that's, I mean, you see, this is the, this is, gets you through the door of the zoning, and then the zoning will apply, and you don't worry about that.
But you make a good point. I mean, whether or not these sites would comply or not, I'm not going to give a legal opinion on, and, but people ask what potential sites there could be theoretically used to comply.
It's highly unlikely, like you already stated. Look, if you have to assemble five residential homes on Blue Hill Parkway that are probably going to cost you between $500 and $1 million, and then you're going to tear them down, you know, it's, you're going to be into a tough basis.
A lot of...
Yeah, so you can build a supermarket when there's one right down the street.
It's way from another one.
60-foot setback.
Yeah, so you got a, you got a challenge. But anyways, we've answered the question, I hope, to the satisfaction of the, the enquirer. The second question is, can you please explain why specific provisions of Section 7 of the zoning bylaws regarding parking areas in a residence district normally subsection G setback requirements for parking areas in residence AA, AB, and C districts, and subsection H dot 7 screening residential districts in H dot 8, multiple parking areas are not applicable in the Parkway PUD article. And I believe the reason why is because there's separate language governing all of the specific points in those articles in this PUD, so...
And that language was basically part of the institutional use zoning. It was, it was, it was theorized that an institution might move into a residential area, and these parking requirements were basically designed for an institution moving in without being subject to a special permit, because the institution would have federal amendment protection, and so the zoning made specific requirements for parking lots, because there would be no special permit process. And this is different, because there is a special permit process, and the parking requirements can be, can be adjusted to meet what the board feels is needed.
And that, that actually answers another question that was not called out with full facing and a specific number, but one of them was, he did ask, it would be really, can the, I don't have it, I don't, can't find it quickly, but essentially, can the planning board modify these regulations? And to the extent permissible in the bylaw, yes, we, they're all, the, the planning board has a fair amount of latitude in conditioning the special permit.
Yeah, that was the point I wanted to make about parking. Is that these are the baseline requirements, but we can add other things as well.
As conditions.
Exactly.
Great. So I hope that, hopefully that answers the Sloan's questions. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the Parkway Plan Unit Development? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? On favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to say that I don't think I've seen enough tonight on Carberry to reduce the unit size, the unit number from 58 to 44, but I, you know, will carefully look at the information we've received, and if there's a credible case to be made, it can be made at town meeting. But I would move that we recommend approval of the article that the warrant committee has put on the warrant and that we recommended to the warrant committee.
So this is a partial, is this for both or one?
Well, it's...
For Carberry?
It's for Carberry.
Okay, that's fine, we can do it separately.
I mean, I'm gonna do the same thing.
That's fine, but let's do it separately. I think that's fine, we can do it separately. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, and let's have discussion?
I just, yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, it's, I think it's always our job to be very sensitive to the neighbors and the town as a whole, and to do the right thing, and I think a development that's proposed up there, that does preserve a lot of the land versus, I can see the, you know, the single-family development exhausting more of the land and being as much of a congestion problem, this and that. But I think we also have to keep in mind that it's not our goal or our job to help the developer maximize its profit. It's our goal to try to maybe strike a balance there, and for that matter, be more on the side of the preservation of what's good for the community, the neighbors. Anyway, always work out the abutters, the neighborhood, the town as a whole. So I'd just like to keep that in mind.
I'd like to sort of second that in a, in a way, and suggest that I don't think we should ever take the economics into consideration, to the extent that, you know, as long as we're approving something that makes economic sense, you know, whether someone's making 150 or 175% or 200%, I don't think that's our purview. I think you're absolutely right. I will say that I think the, you know, I think this developer is probably leaving money on the table, in the sense of what he could potentially do here, but I don't know that for sure. And so ultimately, I think that I'm generally happy to see that the site will be left, to some extent intact along upper Canton Avenue, and I think town meeting will most assuredly have a long conversation about this, to the extent that for the pure spectacle of nothing else, I've changed my flights to come back in time for this hearing, so I look forward to it.
Just for two seconds, and I'd just add a little bit, and that is that some of the developments that have taken place, like for instance, the Hendry site, I mean, it's getting to a good spot, I think.
I agree.
And I'd love to see it torn down and finished, and that'd be a great thing. And it took an extreme amount of time.
Sure did.
When I started here, it started before me. But again, on this side, I think we put the neighbors in a tough spot in the sense that we've allowed it to progress through at a fairly good pace, and, you know, if this kind of money's to be had and this kind of development's to be had, I don't know what, why we should hurry it, and I think we kinda, again, put the neighborhood in position where they, they can't continue to work a little bit more to try to find a place where it would be a great deal because everybody could be happy, but that's more of an opinion than anything, I guess.
Okay, any else?
No, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Smith for the time and energy put into providing this detail. I think it was a valiant effort, and I will do the same as Alex and take a good hard look at it, and I think it is good father for the position that you have for town meeting. I don't disagree with you, Mike. I do think that this was a quick process, but I think we should also keep in mind that this is just the zoning. So if the zoning is successful, I don't expect that this is gonna be a overnight permitting process. I wouldn't be shocked. So there's still a lot more opportunity for us to shape things and, you know, keep all of those considerations of the neighbors in mind if this is successful at town meeting, which is a big if.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's three to one with one absent, so that is the record for Julia. All right, and now we'll go to Plan Unit Development for the Parkway.
So I would move that we recommend approval of the article on the warrant to town meeting.
Okay.
Or recommend that town meeting approve the article on the warrant.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, further nothing. Okay, very good. We're gonna move on now to our new business. We have a discussion to modify 37 Central Avenue Site Plan Approval.
I sent you some materials last Friday. There's a slight change to the plan that went out on Friday. You should have a document that looks like this, with two 11-by-17 sheets stapled to it.
This is old mail.
Don't rip it up.
All right. It's gonna confuse it otherwise.
All right, rip it up, go ahead.
Otherwise, it just confused us. I don't know which one I'm looking at. All right, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ned Corcoran with John Burke, who is the principal of Vingeon LLC, the owner of the property of 37 Central. Back in January, January 12th to be exact, this board voted to approve, to grant site plan approval to the, to the project to add in addition to existing building of 37 Central Avenue. Since that time, Mr. Burke and his architect have done a couple of things. One is that the garage that is shown as existing has been removed, but that, they've proposed to an additional 54 square feet to the addition that was approved off the rear of the property, and that would be a, going one foot further back, so instead of nine and a half feet back, it's 10 and a half feet, and off to the right-hand side, it's about a foot and a half. So it's a combination of 41.4 feet times a foot.
I've got the original site plan that was approved up on the, up on the screen, and I'll just note, regarding the garage, it doesn't say it on the plan, but the narrative in the application originally that, from January, did note that the garage would probably be taken down, so that's, I wouldn't consider that to be a modification as much as just...
Just note that it was done.
Yeah.
I gotta put it on that. I wanted to keep it, but my partners, my kids said, "Come on, dear."
And then, so the idea is just simply going back a foot and off to the right by a foot and a half. The second piece, and that is, would increase the size of the foundation. The second piece is that there would be, there's a deck proposed that would not be excavated with a full foundation, be footings, and that's to the, on the front side of the porch on the left, and that is a small deck that is a 46 and a half square feet total. So I think these are fairly de minimis. They are within the area that was approved by the Board of Appeals with respect to this variance for a setback on the left-hand side. And so the other thing we've done is that in accordance with the decision of the board in January, we've actually shown the silk fence on the new plan. It's not, that's the old plan up there, but if you look on the, along the right side of the parking areas, you look back towards Elliot Street, we've drawn in the location of a silk barrier to address the stormwater issues that the board required as part of the, as part of the site plan approval. And so with that, I'd ask the board to find that this is a de minimis modification to the plan that was previously approved, such that we would not require re-advertising and rehearing. We're approaching the end of March, and that process would delay, would delay significantly the opportunity to get into the ground and get the work done.
We wanted to talk with Joe, Mr. Prondick, he was fine with everything, but he basically said, "The changes that you're doing is not to the same specs that you've got approved." He was fine with it, but he said that you have to come back before you folks, and that's why I'm here today for, you know, so hopefully it's...
And that's just site plan approval. Basically, it's the same site plan.
Yep, minor changes, I would say de minimis probably, but...
They sound de minimis to me.
I think I'd be...
I'd say minor, but de minimis is fine.
I think, you know, we can just approve a new site plan, though, to create any, to eliminate any potential...
Well, no, but, well, just, I don't think so because we might have to advertise a new site plan, so we'll just approve these changes as de minimis changes, and I wish you well.
So I actually have a document that Mr. Corcoran prepared that describes the changes and includes this language on a decision. The planning board finds that the proposed additions totaling 100.5 square feet is de minimis and approves the revision of the site plan approval on that basis. In addition, during construction, applicant shall install a silk barrier to manage the flow of stormwater as shown on the revised...
Okay, why don't you read the whole thing?
Pursuant to Section 8D of...
Just so that we can sign it without having to sit around reading it.
Pursuant to Section 8D of Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws, and pursuant to a decision of the Board of Appeals dated December 22nd, 2016, and site plan approval granted by the Milton Planning Board on January 12th, 2017, the Milton Planning Board hereby grants a revision to site plan approval for the development of 37 Central Avenue herein after the property as specified herein. In support of its application, applicant submitted a site plan, the site plan, containing two sheets prepared by DeSalle, Burke, and Associates Incorporated, which are designated as follows, and then the titles of the plans. Applicant proposes to add 54 square feet to a 386-square-foot addition to the rear of the first floor of the building with a new handicapped accessible ramp, the enclosure of an existing porch on the left side of the building, and the addition of a 46.5-square-foot deck attached to the enclosed porch, all as shown on the revised proposed conditions plan. Applica plans to remove a portion of the pavement that abuts the building and to replace it with the addition. Roof area will replace pavement, but there will be no net change to the area of impervious service on the property. The planning board finds that the proposed additions totaling 100.5 square feet is de minimis and approves the revision of the site plan approval on that basis. In addition, during construction, applicant shall install a silk barrier to manage the flow of stormwater as shown on the revised proposed conditions plot plan. Recording the site plan approval, and the site plan shall be recorded with the Norfolk County Register of Deeds by the applicant at its own expense within 30 days from the date when this revised site plan approval becomes final, and a copy of the recorded document with recording information shall be provided to town planner. And I assume that would be today, is that date when it becomes final because...
I'd move that we approve it, pursuant to what, yeah, let's just read.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Everybody have a blue pen?
I've got a blue pen.
What do you?
I got a blue one.
I only have the one blue pen, so it's fine. I mean, not everyone used to sign with a blue pen, is what I meant. You could've kept it.
One blue pen, please, instead of me?
Yeah. I think.
I'm gonna sign with a blue pen now, just in case.
We don't want to have to pull back again.
Okay, we're gonna move to deliberations on Polty Home Special Permit Decision for Cluster Development, Milton Woods Town Farm Site, and I'm gonna turn this over to Alex Whiteside.
Okay, you've seen the most basic copy of the permit. I think we're basically there. There are a couple of things. We're waiting for Mr. Thompson to approve the drainage or specify what conditions are necessary to approve the drainage, and once we get those, we'll put them into the permit. The utility section is, we know how that's going to work. Basically, the utility companies install their own utilities.
They do. They have a lot for the most part.
So we will urge them to do a good job, but... So let me just, because of the fact that you guys are going to go off and do some other, some other business when this project that's underway, we thought it was important to be as detailed as we can be so that, you know, successors in the construction of this project know exactly what they have to do. So basically, Polty has reviewed what we got and are agreeable, and what we got is not much difference from what we had last time. It's a lot longer, but there's a lot more detail, there's a lot more detail, but I went through the various sections. Number one, we've, we've added, we've got a new stone wall plan. It's quite interesting. They're gonna move the stone wall, the sort of trapezoidal stone wall in the middle of the site, and they're gonna use it along the, along the buffer zone, the restricted land. So it will delineate where the restricted land is, and it will be a good reuse of the stone wall, so it works out pretty well. We're gonna have to add the stone wall plan to Section 1.
I didn't, I didn't put the actual plan on my stick. It's not a continuous, it's, there's not enough stones for that, but it's sort of like a dash, sort of.
But we're gonna, that plan will be part of the site plan. Number two, the standards, we've listed the standards pretty well, they're sort of interesting. You might wanna look at them. It isn't a subdivision, but we're treating the street the same way as we would treat a subdivision street. Number three is the authorized development. We've discussed what they are. Number four is the, the new street, which is going to be called Baker Street, which seems like a good name. We've mentioned that they're gonna need their access permit from the DCR before they start cutting down trees. Number five has to do with the waivers for the roadway that they propose. And number four actually discuss the, discusses the dead-end street, which is much longer than a dead-end street. We would laugh at a dead-end street, but there is an emergency access from Governor Stoughton Lane, and thinking back on Kingsale Lane, it seems to me that those pavers that were used for Kingsale Lane are exactly what's needed here for the emergency access drive because we don't want it to turn into nothing. We want it to be available and well marked out. So that, and with the emergency access drive, we've done this before. With the emergency access drive, we've allowed dead-end streets which are longer because we're not really dead-end streets anymore. Number five is other waivers to the subdivision rules and regulations. Number six is the stormwater maintenance and... The drainage, the drainage, the drainage, we're waiting for Mr. Thompson to do the, come up with the drainage issues. There were a couple of, a couple of, we seem to, although there are 10 and 11 utilities and drainage, and six is somewhat duplicative of 11, but still. Open land is number seven, maintenance of open land. We have attached, do we have attached the... We have attached, do we have attached the, we have this Milton Woods Land Management Plan. Have you looked at that? And you're agreeable. Has the board been given the land management plan?
Yes.
And you've got clean copies of that in your-
We're going to, we're going to include that in the open land section.
This was derived largely from the-
From Howard Park Street?
Right, okay. Yeah, it was a good-
Alex, you want, you want this to be in the text of the special permit, or you want this to-
Oh, it's going to be an attachment. It's going to be an exhibit. It's just that we're gonna have to refer, I mean, we're gonna say, we're gonna get the exhibits. You and I are gonna go through the exhibits to make sure that they're all properly labeled.
Do it quickly. He's leaving.
Yeah. I was thinking that he was leaving next Tuesday, and it turns out we've got a whole week with him.
Oh, okay, well then we'll do it.
So this is just-
Nice.
And a good week.
Good news. Party every day.
The buffer area, we've discussed that at some length, and I think that I've incorporated the discussions into what the, what we've been talking about. Number nine is the construction management plan, which actually, we've still got a few, I've still got some proofreading, but it's minor. I mean, Colty has says that we're there. We have something called the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is referenced in the construction management plan in a number of places, and that has yet to be approved by the Conservation Commission. So we're going to, we're going to have an appropriate reference to the fact that it has to be approved by the Conservation Commission. But if you've looked at the, I think you've got, if you've looked at the construction management plan, it's quite a plan.
Quite a plan.
It's quite a plan.
Alex, on the reference to Concom, will that also allow for, it'll acknowledge that Concom has to approve it? Do we also need to potentially acknowledge that we would recognize any modifications to it by Concom?
I think that if there's anything Concom says that's inconsistent, that we'll change it so that the construction management plan and what Concom says are consistent.
Concom rules, right, that's, okay. Do they have to come back for that, or should we just reference that Concom will have jurisdiction on that matter?
Well, we'll have, you know, anything that isn't major.
Okay, fine.
If it's major, they'll come back. If it's not, they won't.
Sounds good.
Okay. 1011, you can see, we're just waiting for John Thompson. Affordable housing, we, you can see this does go on, but we added just how they're going to make the housing work, so that it is includeable on the subsidized housing inventory. And they got three choices. And the preference is that they rehabilitate the building at the town farm, the smaller of the two existing buildings. And if they can't do that, basically go off-site and, or, or make two units onsite available. The pest house, we've, we've, you can see that we've put in the language about applicant shall be financially responsible for ensuring that the pest houses in structurally sound and low-temperature condition, which was the exact language that we discussed last time. I've also, they're going to have, the foundation will be stone-faced, so that the pest house looks like it's been there forever. The stone walls, you can, you can see that they have agreed with the Historical Commission that the stone walls are going to be relocated and-
Do you have that plan with you?
We do.
I'd love to see it, I just haven't seen it yet. You can keep going, Alex.
All right. And take a look at the plan. It's, there was a lot of surplus stone wall, and this, I think, is going to take care of an awful lot of it. And if there's excess stones, we'll figure out what to do with them, but I don't think there's going to be too much. Farm equipment is something that the Historical Commission, if anything is found, they want it to be, they want it to be saved potentially. We have some setbacks, the setbacks that we discussed, except they push back on the 15. We had 2020 front-back 15 on the sides. They want 10 on the sides. This is not to say, I mean, if you look at the conceptual site, they, they say that we need more flexibility than the 15 allows, I gather.
Ultimately, this affects nobody but themselves, right?
Well, the neighbors.
Well, but they are their own neighbors, right? Because it's a side yard setback, so I'm assuming that that, so at least it doesn't impact existing homes.
It's, it's, I mean, it is a sort of, I think that they, you go 15 if you could, but the plan is just-
So if I, you know, if, if the board is concerned about the, you know, when we say 15 feet side setback, that, that essentially says to me as a surveyor, we want to have at least 30 feet between buildings. So we're willing to do that. That's okay with us. We don't really want to have them that close. When I prepared the plans with the houses and lot lines shown, I was under the impression there really weren't any setbacks to deal with, and I was showing pods for houses and then putting the lot lines around those. So I really didn't, I didn't really pay a lot of attention to where the actual line occurred, except something of a little bit of practicality. So when we say 10, we're looking for 10. If you, if you look at that site plan, you might see that one building might be 10 feet off of, off of my proposed lot line, but the next building is 40 feet off on the, on the other side. So essentially, you've got 50 feet between structures.
That's our language then, that we, the buildings won't be any closer. Well, they're 10 feet setback, but no closer than 30 feet between-
30 feet between buildings.
You know you're gonna design it well, but that's great.
I think in the future, either sort of as, as a, just a policy or a custom, because this is, I think, a flaw in the zoning, that, because every, every cluster application that's come up has sort of asked, you know, "What do we do about setbacks?" So articulating that earlier in the process, I think, would be a good idea. And whether you peg it to the base zoning, you peg it to how much it resembles existing zoning somewhere else, because the zoning doesn't address setbacks, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Height, 35 feet, 11 feet for the task garages and sheds. The building and driving, driveway placement, you can see in the light, we try and keep them, they have on their plans the conceptual siteing of the driveways and the houses, and we're saying stick by those, but you can adjust them by up to 15 feet, because they say, you know, people are going to pick their own house. And so the conceptual, what they conceive may not be the actual. So we say that you can't make your houses or driveways more than 15% bigger than what's shown on the conceptual plans, unless you come back and show that there's a good reason for more. And that seems, you agree that that's not unreasonable.
And then that would apply presumably to any future additions, which would then require-
I would assume so.
Okay.
Room designs is just make them, make them different. Parking, no parking on Governor Stoughton Lane, Countryside Drive, or on the emergency access drive. And I'm going to let DCR take care of Unquity Road. Signs, once again, a lot of these signs are gonna have to deal with DCR on, it seems to me, since it is DCR property. But if the sign review, I put in the sign review committee, and if they say we'd like the sign, it seems to me that that's, that's good.
Yep.
Emergency access drive with the pavers, drain achievement on the trustees' land, which is, we've discussed. Tree protection site mobilization is actually something that came out of the construction management plan, but seemed to be perfectly reasonable to include here. Truck traffic, they're going to use the route that we've discussed off of-
Cueing is bedroom.
What?
Cueing is bedroom, just as a quick typo, you need another U in there.
Q U E U?
U, yep.
All right. That's a good, good thing to catch. They didn't know what they were talking about.
There's Spanish in here.
Then plenty parking. We have a noise, a noise section, loudspeakers, keep the, keep the radios down. It just avoids loud noise. Where they have typical items on their plans, we're saying you're gonna use your typical items unless you tell someone, but you're not gonna use typical items. Association of law owners, the Association of Law Owners, and the Home Owners Association documents are, I think, satisfactory. We don't have that happily. We don't have that to review quite yet. Enforcement of the permit is 31, 32 is commencement and completion of construction, 33 is the access permit from DCR. And 34 simply says, if you do, if you build it, if you build it right, we will recommend that the town accept it, but of course, that will be up to the town meeting. But we will, we'll support you if you do what you're supposed to do. 35 just is cautionary. If, if your drainage even after all we've done doesn't work, you're gonna have to make it work. 36 is having as responsible people, so that people will know who to talk to. Access to site, I laughed, but it's always good to allow the building, in spite of access to the site.
Yes, we've had some issues with that.
38 is the bond, and I think you've looked at that, Brian, and-
Yeah, that looks great.
-satisfied. Construction knows model homes temporarily off Australia. 42, the Historical Commission, two of their items, the stone walls and the farm equipment have been dealt with elsewhere, but they have asked for some additional landscaping, which is on a separate plan, so we, we bring that in here. Assignment amendment according, and we're done. And Exhibit A, you can put a big X through, and the exhibits, as I said, Tim and I are going to make sure all the exhibits line up with what's set out in the, in the, in the permit. And we're gonna do it within the week.
Great. Any questions by the board here of what Alex has done?
No questions.
Alex, thank you for a really thorough job here. It's really well done. Appreciate all your hard work on this.
So you've got redline copies of these? You've got a clean copy in your hands? I'll make sure Cheryl gets all that stuff as well, so she can-
So we anticipate a vote at the next meeting on this application from the full board?
And we're going to anticipate while we have Tim pulling something together for signature.
Right, so hopefully we'll have everything ready for you before next Tuesday for a review, or not next Tuesday, but the following, for review, and then we'll be, we'll be back here on the 13th. That'd be great. It's very evident you spent a lot of time going through the documents, so we thank you for that. It's, there was a lot of work put into it, for sure.
Well, it's a, it's a complicated, I mean, the number of moving parts in this particular plan are extraordinary.
It's very comprehensive. But I think in the end it's-
They'll see you in a couple weeks.
Yeah, thank you for coming in here tonight.
Thank you.
I'm ready to entertain a motion at 8:07.
Wow. We adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who needs that, that's my rule.